All right.
There you are.
See, I told you.
I'm gonna call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting of November 3rd, 2020. Can we call a roll call, please?
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritz? Diane?
Here.
That was Diane. Okay, here, Diane's here. I can barely hear you.
Mr. Fields? Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Here.
All present?
Here.
We heard you, Vicky.
We got you.
Good.
Okay, for those that can, please rise for the pledge of allegiance with me.
To the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Got way ahead of myself. Okay, item four, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of October 20th, 2020.
So move. Doug, second.
All right, let's call a roll call vote, please.
I think she's switching to a different mic, so may I take her a second?
Ah, gotcha. There she is, she's coming back.
We'll have to tell her who made the motion.
May I back that? We had a point for a roll call vote for the approval of the city council minutes.
Was it Doug that made the motion?
Yep, I made the motion.
And Steve made the...
The second.
Right?
I don't hear Betsy yet. Dan, could you take the minutes for that and call a roll?
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz? Mrs. Fritz?
Diane?
Aye.
Diane? Mr. Fritz? Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Foster? Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moves us on to item five, correspondence. We'll go down the line here, Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Vicky has a delay in her audio.
Yeah. Mr. Fields, do you have any correspondence?
I received two emails that I think everybody else did about the Tyranina Park trails, some of the clarifications there. From Melissa and Patricia, but their recommendations for what they'd like to see out there in our... ordinances after this.
Okay. Mr. Fritz, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I received the same emails and I have, I got some information from a rider of the trails, an older rider of the trails, not a younger one, that I'll maybe mention later on.
Okay, thank you. Diane?
Yes, I had a couple of phone calls from constituents and again, I'll bring them up when we talk about that item.
Okay. Ms. Schmidt, Vicky, do you have anything?
I got the same emails and I got a couple of phone calls on the same subject.
All right, thank you, and I did, I got the same emails. So it moves us on to item six, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comment pertains to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing, and we do have two public hearings tonight. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address from starting your comments, and if you're here in the, in the audience, fill out the sign-in sheet provided. For those attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature. We'll go to the audience here first. Is there anybody who wants to make any comments in public comment? That looks like a no. Is there anybody online that would like to make some comments in public comment?
Yes, we have two, Mike, and one is Lisa Curler and the other one is Melissa Furman, so... Lisa, if you'd like to go first, and then Melissa, if you could go second? All right, thank you.
Thank you, this is Lisa Curler, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name's Lisa Curler, I live at 369 West Prospect, and I've been a resident of Lake Mills for 13 years. Tonight, I want to comment on two items that are on your agenda. First, I applied to serve on the RLAC Building Purchase Ad-Hoc Committee, so just want to introduce myself. I recently retired and I plan to spend some of my volunteer time being more involved in our community, so thank you for providing this opportunity. I appreciate you considering me for this committee and I look forward to working on that important issue. Second, I would like to comment on the Tyranina Park bike trails, and I have spoken with you before. I appreciate your past action to table this item and request more information from the Parks Board. I reviewed the memo and the proposed rules and the trail map that are under tonight's Agenda Item 9C, and I'm still concerned about the safety of park users and the impacts on the forest and wildlife from the new trails. The GIS map shows the extensive density of trails that wind back and forth through the entire park. I feel this has harmed the woodland character and the wildlife habitat in what for many years has been a nature-based park, and I would like to see some of these new trails removed and a habitat restored. Also, the proposed rules don't identify any time of day when mountain biking is prohibited, which I think is going to create some safety hazards after dark, and the proposed rules don't protect the nearshore area by prohibiting bikes on the lakeshore path. So I hope that you will not approve tonight's motion on the Tyranina Park trail, bike trails, and that there's some continued discussion to address the safety and the impacts of the new trails. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa is next, is that right?
I think so, yeah. Can you hear me? I'm not very good at technology.
Yep, we can hear you.
My name's Melissa Furman, I live at 225 Circle Drive in Lake Mills. I'm coming to you today to talk about Tyranina Trails. I've talked with you about them pretty much every meeting you've had. I still have some concerns as well, one being, and I'm not an attorney, so I don't know how this works, I just want to make sure that in the first part of your motion where it talks about individual or team sports, that there's, there won't be mountain bike races out at Tyranina Trails. It says in there, individual team sports, and also mentions skateboarding, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that it's clear that there is not mountain bike racing out there and there are not skateboards out there. The other thing I have a question about is in Section 2 of the motion, it says further approval, it doesn't indicate who. I'm hoping that's city council, so I don't know if that maybe needs to be made clearer. My other question is, and I brought this up at the Parks Board meeting in September, the biking hours, I asked about safety in the dark, riding bikes in the dark, and I would ask that there be no riding bikes in the dark for the safety aspect. Also, when I was at the Parks Board meeting in September, they had mentioned the shoreline trails, the old ones down by the shore, we're going to be walking only, but I noticed those are not identified as that in the map, so I just wanted to figure out if those will be identified or if there's more discussion that'll happen on those. I too am asking you not to approve it and to continue your discussion on the Tyranina Trails rules and the motion that pertains to it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, and I did send a answer back to your email earlier, you may not have seen it. It might give you a little bit more information.
I got it, I just wanted to make sure everybody else heard too. I appreciate your response.
Perfect, yep.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else? All right, hearing nothing. We will move on to item seven, the city manager's report. Steve?
I have, I have nothing to report at tonight's meeting, kind of hoping to get home and watch the polls.
You lead an exciting life, my friend.
It is pretty boring, I know.
Item eight, acceptance of minutes from the Public Works Board of September 8th, 2020, the Plan Commission of August 25th, 2020, and the Senior Advisory Board of October 15th, 2020 will go on, record is written. It moves us into council business. First item is tavern operator licenses. Could I get those names, or is there any reason we can't read all three names at one time?
I think we should split them up.
Okay, do we want all, all three of them as separate?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, all right, can we read the first name then?
Kelly Carr.
Yay, Betsy's back. Okay, first name is Kelly Carr, is there a motion of adoption for a tavern operator license for Kelly Carr?
So move.
That was Mr. Fields?
Correct.
Is there a second? I will second that. Could we call a roll call vote on that one, please?
Diane?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Doug, are you there?
Mr. Fritz?
Looks like he might got it, he might have gotten bumped.
Yep.
Okay.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
I have it as two yeses and two noes, and I don't have Mr. Fritz's vote yet.
We don't have a tie break. What do we do in this instance?
It doesn't pass, does it? They have to have a three vote.
Well, it can't pass like that. I'm wondering if Mr. Fritz is present or not.
He might have, he might have muted his, mute his volume button.
He is, he is not on anymore. I can, I can tell by... The fact that there's not another SW on, so we'll see if he comes back on. Can we move on and then come back if he comes back on?
Well, it's sitting as a 2-2 right now, and the motion doesn't pass, so... You could hold it open until Mr. Fritz comes back, otherwise reconsider it upon his arrival.
Let's go with the reconsideration as soon as he comes back on. So we can spring that up when he comes back on. Okay, let's move on to the second name.
Amy Haas.
Do we have a motion of adoption for a tavern operator's license for Amy Haas? Okay, so hearing nothing on that one. That one is...
No motion, right?
No motion. We have to notify them that no motion was made, or how do we notify them of that?
Clerk would send out a letter.
Saying that...
That license isn't granted, that no one motioned and made a second.
Okay, all right, let's move on to the third name.
Tyler, or Taylor Mewus.
Is there a motion of adoption for tavern operator's license for Taylor Mewus?
So move.
Mr. Field?
Correct.
Yep, is there a second?
Eve?
Yes, is that you, Doug?
Yeah, I'm back on.
Doug's back on.
On the phone, on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a motion open right now, I haven't heard a second.
Yep, we're looking for a second for the tavern operator license for Taylor Mewus.
For who?
Taylor Mewus.
Oh.
I'll second it. Let's call a roll call vote on Taylor Mewus.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
No.
Okay, that takes us back to the roll call vote on Kelly Ann Carr. Right now, it's a 2-2 tie, and we need a roll call vote from Mr. Fritz for a tavern operator license for Kelly Ann Carr.
Yes.
That's a aye.
That's an aye.
Okay.
Motion passes 3-2.
Okay, and I think that's all the names we had. Come on, go away. Okay, item B, board and committee appointments for the Rock Lake Activity Center Purchase Ad-Hoc Committee. So this one is mine, and I've gone through all the applications and I've created a charter for the team to work off of. So the committee members are as follows. We have two groups. We have voting members and we have non-voting ex officio members. And there's a reason for those ex officio members, they've been part of this process from the, from the start, and we want them to be resources for the group, so the ex officio members will be Ben Dayton, Wendy Brockert, and Renee Weddle. And right now, Vicky Schmidt is a council, she'll be there for anything that is council-related on this board. The Activity Center committee members will be Richard Mason, Janelle Pauley, Todd Temperley, Jason Palmquist, I think I got that right, Ken Elmers, Troy Claus, Gregory Polacek, Lisa Curler, Carrie Coffey, and Carol Burrows. All of this information is online on the agenda for this evening, so if you go into the agenda and go to this item on the agenda, you'll have the list, and the charter is in there also. So expect someone from the staff to contact you to work on setting up the initial date to get together, and the plan right now is it's going to have to be a virtual meeting as much as possible. And I'm not going to read through the whole charter here, but basically you'll have to, once you get into your meeting, you'll set up a chair and a secretary to record the minutes, and then I've set some pretty strict guidelines and dates when we'd like some information back, and if you need more time, whoever the chair is will be able to just request more time from the council to make a, to make a good decision on this. So that's all we have right now on that item, so those folks that are part of the committee, thank you so much for volunteering. This is how we are able to get stuff done in this community, is get people together and make some good decisions with sound advice and sound information. So as soon as the staff is able to put stuff together and get in contact with you, I hope you guys can get, get into some good meeting sessions and figure out whether we should move forward or not. All right.
Do you need a motion for the ad hoc committee that you wrote up?
No, it, you guys set it up that I just appointed.
Yeah, but we didn't. We, you wrote it up. Didn't make the council approval?
You, when you made the initial motion when I wasn't here, you made it so the city council president set the charter and set the motion, or set the stuff in motion.
Okay.
So that's why I put it all together, so I'm just appointing them right now. Now we can, if you want me to, you definitely can.
I was ready to make a motion to approve the ad hoc committee.
Let's, let's do it then, let's do it then.
Yeah, it gives, it gives it more authority, I think.
You got it, go ahead and make, make that motion.
I, I would like to make a motion to approve the ad hoc committee description as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vicky. Could I get a roll call vote, please, then?
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you, Diane and Vicky.
And thank you for doing the work for that.
Yep, and thank you for the folks that volunteered. All right, so we have discussion, decision on Tyranina Bike Trails currently tabled. We need a motion to take this off the table?
So move, Diane.
I move.
Who said, I think Diane, you said it first, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second. Second, Doug.
We got Mr. Fields. Okay, roll call vote, please, to take this off the table.
Just fighting over these motions.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, it's off the table. Can we get the, the title of the motion read?
Yep, just a second. Approving a recommendation from the Parks Board regarding bike trails in Tyranina Park.
Okay, before we discuss this, we'll get a motion of adoption for motion 20-11-1-1.
So move.
Mr. Fields, thank you, is there a second?
Second, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Okay, so we have a motion to, to adopt motion 20-11-1-1. We'll get it right here. So we've gone and we've asked the Parks Department to do a few things, and I did want to make one comment before we get going here, and it was in reference to Melissa's question. That first paragraph is basically talking about all of our park responsibilities and not particularly Tyranina Park, so when it mentions stuff like individual sports and skateboarding and stuff like that, it, it's a broad statement that it's stuff that we offer inside of our community, inside of our parks, and it's not a directed statement towards Tyranina. So, my questions, I, I saw the map, and then I saw the map that Ms. Cicero, Ms. Cicero sent us, and trying to understand what we're seeing there is, I guess, what's concerning me. I don't truly understand it, and where that second map came from that was forwarded to us today, who created that and why it was created, and does it play any role in what we're talking about this evening? So if somebody can answer that for us, I, I see that it's on the GIS system, but looking at those little lines on the GIS system, to a lot of us, just doesn't tell us much.
Well, first, Mike, did anybody other than the council get that map? Because I didn't get one.
I, I forwarded it to Heather and to Misty for the record.
Yeah, they're both in elections, so they haven't...
Let me see if I can... Forward it to you. clue.
That doesn't, that doesn't help me a lot, cause I haven't seen any of the maps. It's, all this has been pretty much done by Rob. You on tonight, Rob?
Yeah, I'm on, Steve.
Okay. Have you seen the map that was sent today?
No, I did not. The, the GIS mapping that was done by Light and Water Department was the one that's in the council packet.
Yeah, I just forwarded that to both of you, the map that was sent to us by Patricia Cicero. She said, "I've attached a map, put together, I believe, by the volunteers who helped build the trail." So I don't even know where it came from for sure, and she doesn't know for sure either.
I have a concern that envelops this whole issue. It's my understanding from having looked at the current zoning plan that when we adopted the new zoning a few years back, we left out the, by accident, the zoning that was in the old one for Tyranina Park. So I think we have a bigger problem here than the bikes. We, we really have, we need to look at Tyranina Park, period. I don't think that was the intent to dezone it, but we ended up dezoning it. I was going to ask Dan Drescher if he would comment on my, my observation.
I provided a memo to the Parks Board on this topic with regard to the nature reserve status that Tyranina Park enjoyed in the previous iteration of the zoning code. The only issue that I have with your statement is that it was accidentally let out of the current zoning code. I, I don't know the circumstances there. I know that that was specifically left out of the adopted zoning code. And there is a clause in the adopted zoning code that says items that were left out from version to version were intentionally left out and are thereby repealed. So I wasn't your attorney at that point in time, and I'm, I'm not really sure of the circumstances of why that specific portion of the zoning code was not adopted in the, in the, the new zoning code. I, I don't have insight there. I can provide the memo that was provided to the Parks Board, to the city council at a future date, certainly. And in fact, to be honest, I, I thought I did.
It sounds to me like we still have work to do on this. I don't even think we're at a point where, you know, looking at the rules and for the bike trail and so forth, because I don't think we, we, we're not, we haven't done what we really should do for the park. And I know I was on the council during the time, and I did not knowingly delete that. So if it got deleted, it wasn't by my understanding that it had been deleted.
Alright, sorry. We're running out of power here. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I was missing some of that, just a little bit about it.
What, what I was saying, Mike, was that I think we have a bigger issue than the one that we originally started because we never did go back and do what we had to do to protect Tyranina Park. And then this whole thing came up and it, it's, I think we need to back up and figure out what exactly, where we are, cause I don't, I, I think that's all I need to say right now.
Okay. I guess we can go over to Vicky. Maybe you can shed a little light on the information that Dan provided.
I haven't recently read the information from Dan. However, my recollection was when we did a sort of a wholesale rewrite of all of zoning code, a lot of things got changed from the old zoning to the new zoning that wasn't specifically talked about by anybody, but that doesn't mean that it wasn't officially adopted. Cause you know, that new zoning code is just massive in terms of size compared to the old zoning code. So it probably went unnoticed by folks that the specific zoning designations in the parks was now gonna be kinda all-inclusive, that we weren't gonna be breaking down certain parks for certain zoning classifications. That got lost. That's not that it was unintentional, it was just sort of, it just happened. So it's a lawful zoning that we have now, in my opinion, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't go back and, and do a rezoning of, of Tyranina Park. There's nothing stopping us from revisiting the zoning of it if we wanted to, or if the Plan Commission wanted to. We could backtrack. But I think, besides the zoning issue, I think that, that Patricia raised a lot of valid points in her email from today, and then looking at the map that she provided. I think that we, whatever map we officially adopt, it should designate which are the walking trails and which are the trails that could be used for both walking and biking, so that those trails along the lake are not designated as a multipurpose trail, cause that's how they are now. I think that, that we, there's nothing wrong with the GIS map, I just think we need an additional map besides that, that labels the specific uses. And then Patricia's map talked about maps, or talked about trails that are under construction. Well, our motion talks about that you can't do any more construction. So what happens to the ones that were under construction but weren't completed? Does that give carte blanche that now they can be completed? Or are they just supposed to sit there in the state that they're in now, not completed forever and ever? So I think that needs to be addressed as well. And, and then the rules, we need to have something that says when they can, can bike. And, and I think the rules need to be a little bit more concise. I don't really picture somebody standing there at the beginning of the bike trail and reading them all and comprehending them all, and then being able to follow them. And then the last point is, I think we need to have an ordinance that encompasses the rules so that the police department can actually enforce them. Because just posting rules at the park doesn't mean anybody at all can enforce them if somebody's violating them. So I think, I think the council needs to take this up again. So maybe we should table this and if nothing else, have a work session when the virus clears a bit so that we could actually sit in one room together and hash it all out and, and have Rob there with us and try to grasp this and understand it a little bit better. Because that, once the snow falls, I'm not, I'm not a mountain biker, but I would suspect that the trails aren't gonna get used during the winter because how are you gonna see where the trails are? And so perhaps this would be a time just to work on it. So my recommendation, I, I would like to make a motion to table this for further study.
Okay, so.
I would, this is Doug. I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table this for a further work study. Is there any other?
I would like to make one fir.
Yeah, go ahead.
One further comment. We had talked about two, that ultimately we might take and, and develop one of the other properties that the city owns into a separate bike park, which to me would be probably preferable. So I would hope that that would be on the agenda also in reconsidering that ultimately the goal is to have the bike trail somewhere else.
Okay, well, everything will be open once we start getting into a work session to look at other options or continue with this option. So right now, there is a motion to table. And is there any other conversation on this one?
I would like to ask that the item be brought back after the holidays and the New Year's year.
Yep, we'll just keep it on the table until we're ready to bring it back for a, a work session so we can get people together and figure out what is the, the best course of action. But what this is gonna do effectively right now is it's not gonna close the park to mountain biking. They can still continue on as they are until further adjustments have been made in the future.
I have one question before we close the subject tonight. By allowing the biking up there, how much liability is that giving the city of Lake Mills?
None.
Well, if a young man or a young woman is driving and they don't see a turn and they smack right into a tree and have a concussion and get killed, we're cleared, we're free. Why? How does that happen?
Dan, what's the term?
Well, we enjoy a certain immunity, recreational immunity in this circumstance. It's a public park. I do, once again, very strenuously suggest that there is a notice sign on the site that says, "Use at your own risk," along with appropriate rules if, if mountain biking is out there. But the theory under which the city would enjoy a lack of liability in that circumstance is recreational immunity.
So.
Well, I would, okay, I'll do.
It holds us, yeah, it holds us harmless.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
And I, and I talked to a elder, older gentleman who uses the trail frequently, and he has had spills in the, on the trails, and he, it's part of the expectation that that will happen.
Yeah.
And liability.
Yep. Okay.
Not really an issue.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you, Doug.
I'll call the question.
Yep, let's call the roll call vote then for the motion to table.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four one.
Okay, so it's tabled for now. Alright.
Oh, Mike?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Is Rob on the line?
He is.
Has there been any problems so far with the way the situation is right now?
I have gotten no complaints about the bike trail with people using them since the initial onslaught of this back at the beginning. I've not witnessed any problems up there. Police department has not gotten any, you know, issues up there. So for the most part, it's been very quiet up there. I would like to make the recommendation. Um, go ahead.
How's erosion going from wheels and fleet?
Uh, one of the biggest problems is the volunteer group has not worked up there since they were shut down. So the trails are not being maintained one bit. Matter of fact, Tony called me yesterday inquiring where this is standing so they can go up and start doing some cleanup of the area and, and restoring some of the areas so we don't have those issues.
But I don't think any of the motions that we've tabled or anything that we put on hold stopped them from doing any maintenance. I think that was part of the initial thing going forward, that we would allow them to maintain the stuff that's already in place.
That, that's true, but on their end of it, they're, they feel they're not gonna go up and spend a lot of time and effort if all this is gonna be for nothing. If all of a sudden they spend their time and effort up there continually to do it, and ultimately the council votes to get rid of it, they wasted a lot of time up there. So they're waiting for this to be approved and for them to continue doing the maintenance then. I would like to make a suggestion. If you are gonna have a work session, I would highly recommend having the park board attend that meeting along with council, because I'm starting to feel like a yo-yo going back and forth from council to the park board, you know, with your suggestions of what the park board should do. So I think they should be at that work session and be involved with that decisions.
That makes sense. Okay, let's move forward then. We are on, what do we say, item D, Resolution twenty dash thirty-eight. Can I get the title read, please?
Authorizing the granting of a privilege in the street for prohibited encroachments in the street at 203 West Lake Street by Ephraim Pottery.
Alright, do I have a motion of adoption for Resolution twenty dash thirty-eight?
I move Resolution twenty dash thirty-eight, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Diane.
Okay, we'll go with Diane. Okay, one of the staff would like to talk about this one. It just looks like everything fits within code. It's just a matter of approving them to have the privilege in the street. Is that correct?
Kind of.
Okay.
The issue here is, is that if they're approved for a sign under the zoning code, they need a privilege in the street. And based on everything that we've seen under the conditions that are being applied and would be looked at under the zoning, they would qualify for a privilege in the street. It does require them to do some additional paperwork with Betsy, but such as insurance and things like that. But basically, our position is, is that granting them a privilege in the street for a sign would be appropriate as long as they meet the required conditions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Alright, hearing nothing, we will call a roll call vote, please.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Alright, thank you. Moves us on to Resolution twenty dash thirty-nine, City Manager Compensation. Could we get that whole thing read, please?
Resolution twenty thirty-nine, City Manager Compensation. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has heretofore entered into agreement with the city manager that calls for an annual performance evaluation and an annual review of the city manager's compensation. And whereas the City Council has met in closed sessions for the purpose of conducting the performance evaluation and the compensation review of the city manager. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills hereby agrees to compensate the city manager with an annual salary of one hundred thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-nine cents to be paid in twenty-six pay periods over the course of the twelve-month period of service to the City of Lake Mills during 2020. twenty twenty-one. And be it for the resolve that a half percent bonus shall also be paid to the city manager on or about December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, provided no premium payment is required for the income continuation insurance made available to city employees during twenty twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a motion of adoption for less, resolution twenty dash thirty-nine?
So move, Diane.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second?
Second, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. And for those that are listening online, um, just one note to keep in mind, this, this salary is based on two jobs, not just city administrator, but also the, basically the CEO of Light and Water. So... Is there anything else anybody wants to say?
I just wanna mention that, uh, it was in the motion, but we do do, um, a yearly paper evaluation and, uh, at different points during the year, we also meet without it being on paper to, um, make sure that everything and the, in the city is being run the way the council wants it run. And we've been very pleased during the past year with Mr. Wilkie's work.
Thank you, Diane. Anybody else?
Um, I would like to add, this is Dan.
Yeah, go ahead.
That the, the increase in wages and salary, uh, that Mr. Wilkie is enjoying under this resolution is the same as the, the typical raise for city employees. It's one and a half percent. So, um, Mr. Wilkie is the only employee that a unique resolution is, is required under our city ordinances. So, that's why we're going through this process. This is the, the raise that was afforded to employees in the city of Lake Mills. So, there's not really necessarily special treatment here. But I will add to Ms. Fritsch's statement that, um, the annual reviews this year did go very well. So, that's my point.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we will call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Item, uh, F, resolution twenty dash forty. Could I get the title read, please?
Authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located in the Lake Mills business.
Do we have a motion of adoption for resolution twenty dash forty?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Um... So, uh, this is one of those where folks may say, "Well, they're getting a lot of property for a low price," but less than half of it is even buildable. Um, so if you read through the resolution, uh, yeah, less, uh, just about three percent is buildable on this property.
Thirty, thirty.
I'm sorry, I meant three, three acres. So, less than thirty percent. Is that right, Steve?
It'd be pretty close. I think it's seven acres and it's three acres, a little over three acres that are buildable. So, somewhere between, you know, around forty.
Forty percent, something like that. Okay. So, does anybody have any comments or concerns or changes they would like to make in this? It looks like the, uh, real estate agent has cut his, was that almost in half? Or was that ten percent? I can't remember what it was.
Ten percent.
Yeah, so he cut his percentage down.
Yeah, that was one of the negotiation points that came out of the closed session discussion. Um, the original commission rate was, uh, that was offered was ten percent. We did negotiate it down to seven and a half percent.
Yeah. Okay, unless there's any other discussion.
I would like to just mention for the public, um, one of the things that I think makes this a good purchase or sale, I should say, is, uh, the nature of the business being dogs, because by, by the nature of a dog, they do make noise. And we were very cognizant that most people wouldn't want a group of dogs next door to their house. And this piece of property is as far away from property as you can get and still be in the city. So, uh, just so you know, we all thought about that and tried to, uh, make sure that we weren't creating a problem by selling this property.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, if there's nothing else, we have the motion and the second. Can we call a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Item G, resolution twenty dash forty-one. Could I get that title read, please? And the, uh, I'm sorry, and the totals, please?
Resolution declaring official twenty twenty-one utilities budget. Water utility revenues, one million nine hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Expenditures, two million fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Electric utility revenues, eight million nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Expenditures, eight million four hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Wastewater utility revenues, one million eight hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred. Expenditures, two million sixty-nine thousand one hundred. Uh, total revenues for all utilities, eleven million eight hundred forty-nine thousand. Total expenditures of all utilities, twelve thousand five hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred, and fund balance utilization of seven hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred.
Thank you. Do we have a motion of adoption for resolution twenty dash forty-one?
I move motion twenty dash nine, uh, sorry, wrong one. The, uh, public works board. I'm sorry, the utility budget.
Yep, twenty dash forty-one. Okay, do we have a second? That was Ms. Fritsch.
Second.
A second.
Second was Ms. Schmidt. Um, I guess this is yours, Betsy? So, it looks like we're gonna have a little bit that we're gonna have to pull fund balance to make it-
Yes.
To make the balance out.
Yes, that, that's why there is a fund balance utilization in this, um, resolution. Because as you can see, the, uh, the revenues are not equal to the expenditures.
And the, the conversation here should be that, uh, these budgets include the capital budget within them. And we have West Lake Street and Reed Street being completed under these, and we're trying to borrow as little as possible in the utilities because they are at the higher level for, for debt after, uh, twenty eighteen. And since we had the rate of return and we have some fund balances available to us, uh, we opted to use those. We still have a pretty significant amount of fund balance left in two of the funds. Obviously, water is, is always gonna, is tight at this time yet.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Steve or Betsy? Hearing nothing, let's call the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, uh, item, shoot, lost it. Item H, this is a public hearing, uh, for the, uh, proposed budget for the city of Lake Mills twenty twenty-one, general government and debt service funds budget. Uh, how do we normally do this, folks?
Well, we must move into public hearing.
Yeah, we're just in public hearing. I just don't know if we need to read anything for anybody. I don't think so.
Yes.
I can, I can kind of give a brief summary if you want me to, Mike.
Yeah, please, please, Steve.
Okay, generally when we do this notice, there's, um, the general fund, which is our basic, um, fund. So, it's like legislative, executive, general government, public safety, police, library, uh, culture, recreation, and educational, which is a lot of parks and those types of things, public works, EMS, and health and human services. Revenues, because it's a general fund, the revenues don't necessarily match straight up with the expenses. Uh, we take in property taxes that's spread across all our, uh, expense categories as well as, uh, intergovernmental aids, licenses, permits, fines, forfeitures, penalties, uh, public charges for services, intergovernmental charges, uh, miscellaneous, special grants, operation transfers in and surplus applied. Um, as you can see, our revenues are four percent and our expenditures increased by three point nine percent. We hit our, uh, we're under the levy limit and we are under the expenditure restraint, not necessarily equal. We also have our additional funds listed there. So, you have your debt service fund, um, and then you have all governmental and proprietary funds combined. Uh, they give you the full picture of all the activities that the city will be involved in, in the next twelve months or substantially. Might be a few items that come or, come around that we didn't anticipate. As with the, the, uh, utility budget, we always budget high in, uh, expenses and low in revenues. So, like, if, you know, while there's a, uh, under, uh, unreserved fund balance that's used in the utilities, it might not be that much. Um, it's, it's the same here. While we, um, have a zero balance there, we, we probably will end up with some, um, fund balance left at the end of the year, uh, just because we're cautious and we don't wanna, uh, not have enough revenues to cover our expenses. So, you'll note that, uh, it's traditional to, uh, be conservative with the revenues and, and, uh, liberal with expenses. So, well, we try and, and you can ask Betsy, we do a pretty good job of keeping those under control and monitoring those. Um, so are there any, uh, open it up for public hearing unless you, the council, has anything else they think I should add?
No, I think that covers it. And we are open for public hearing and I don't see anybody online anymore. And there's nobody in the gallery.
One thing on here we could possibly make a note of is, um, I don't believe EMS sent a, uh, increase in their cost this year. So, that's actually a zero percent increase, I believe.
Actually, we did get one from them. And I don't believe it was zero, but it fell within the amount that I had budgeted. So, I was, I was satisfied with that. Um, it was done different than it had been in the previous years. But it, it wasn't zero, Steve.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we're still in public hearing and I don't see anybody online. So, at this point, we are gonna close the public hearing. And we're gonna move into the third reading of ordinance twelve seventeen. And let's see here. And we just need the title read for ordinance twelve seventeen, please. And if you could read the total revenues and total expenditures.
Ordinance twelve seventeen, twenty twenty-one general government budget and tax levy ordinance. Total revenues, budgeted twenty twenty, five million two hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred. Twenty twenty estimated, five million two hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred. Twenty twenty-one proposed, five million four hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred. Expenditures, total twenty twenty budgeted, five million two hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred. Total twenty twenty estimated expenditures, five million two hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred. Total twenty twenty-one proposed expenditures, five million four hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred. Debt service, total twenty twenty budgeted expenses, one million seven hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred. Twenty twenty estimate, one million seven hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred. Twenty twenty-one proposed debt service expenses, two million twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Revenues, total revenues twenty twenty budgeted, one million seven hundred eighty, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred. Twenty twenty estimate, one million seven hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred. Twenty twenty-one proposed debt service revenues, two million twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Total amount required for debt service and general property tax levy, twenty twenty budget grand total, four million two hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred. Twenty twenty estimate, four million two hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred. Twenty twenty-one proposed, uh, total, four million five hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred.
Okay. Do we have a motion of adoption for ordinance twelve seventeen?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Is there a second?
Second, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Fritsch. Is there any discussion on the third reading before we go to a roll call vote? All right, let's go ahead and have the roll call vote on the ordinance twelve seventeen, the twenty twenty-one general governmental budget and tax levy ordinance.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. That moves us on to item J, public hearing, twenty twenty-one capital budget. Uh, before we jump into the public hearing, um, who would like to speak on this one for the staff? Steve, is it you?
Yeah, I'll start. See if Betsy wants to add anything. This is, this is laid out pretty much the same way. Um, we pretty much fund our capital budget through debt service, although we do have some, uh, cash that moves into it. There's eight thousand dollars of general property tax, two thousand dollars of county road funds. So, you remember every year and, like, June, we pass a resolution that puts a certain amount of money in with the county and then they match that. That's about two thousand dollars a year, maybe a little bit more. Uh, and then this year, we qualify for LRIP, which is a state local roads maintenance program. We'll use that twenty thousand dollars for, um, the West Lake Street project. Um, and then there's also a grant in there for sidewalks, which we've discussed before. Uh, and then that brings out our total capital, um, project revenues, and that should match up exactly with our- Project revenues and that should match up exactly with our expenditures. So um. The fire department was was uh ma- was mainly new radio equipment to ma- to uh. Become compatible with the county highway or the with the county dispatch. Same with the police department. Police department also had a radio and tasers. Uh, so they'll be flashing their new tasers. Uh, grounds of facilities, um. Was some pretty minor stuff, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, but I. And then conservation and development, that was some studies that we're doing. Uh, some of it's still a follow-up in the Mopon and some of it's still working on the. Uh, composting site. And then public works, obviously, we had Reed Street, we have West Lake Street. Uh, we have several pieces of equipment and then we have three hundred thousand dollars for street maintenance projects, so. That balances out and that gets, that will uh. Some of it will be levied, some of it will be borrowed and put against next year's levy. Uh, so. Any other questions?
No. We are now in public hearing. Once again, there's no one in the gallery and I I don't see anybody online either, do you, Steve? Who's, there's one guest here and I'm not sure who that is.
I think that is um, actually, there are two. There is um probably Vicki is one. And.
Yep.
And I'm not sure who the other one is. Uh, but Rob was in as a guest.
Oh, that's who the guest is. I see him now. Go, Dan.
Yeah, one's me, since I'm on, I'm on the iPad, so the phone. So this doesn't register, so one was me. Okay, so Rob and Vicki are the guests. So there, other than that, it's you, me, Betsy, the rest of the council, and Dan.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, I don't. See, I need to keep public co- or the uh, excuse me, public hearing open, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item K, ordinance twelve eighteen. Could I get the the title and the total revenues read again, please?
Ordinance twelve eighteen, twenty twenty-one capital budget. The total revenues, twenty twenty budgeted, two million eight hundred fourteen thousand five hundred. Twenty twenty estimate, two million eight hundred fourteen thousand five hundred. Total revenues, twenty twenty-one proposed, two million three hundred fourteen thou- excuse me, two million three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred. Expenditures, twenty twenty budget, two million eight hundred fourteen thousand five hundred. Twenty twenty estimate, two million eight hundred fourteen thousand five hundred. Total expenditures, twenty twenty-one proposed, two million three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay. Do we have a motion of adoption for ordinance twelve eighteen, the twenty twenty-one capital budget?
I'll move uh ordinance twelve eighteen for the capital budget for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Is there any discussion? All right, let's call the roll call vote, please.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. We're uh, item ten, recommendation for future agendas. What do we have coming up, Steve?
Uh, we have the fire department service level upgrade. We have the TID number eight. Final uh resolution, final approval. We need a resolution on lead service laterals, um, someone authorized to sign the grant. Uh, that we apparently are getting. Uh, we we have a cemetery layout in past quarter issue that's will be before us. Uh, and I think that's it. Anything else that you guys have?
Oh, I wonder if.
I would suggest.
Go ahead.
I would suggest that we have the work session on the uh park sooner rather than later.
Okay, so any preference?
Well, with the holiday.
Yeah, with the holidays, it just, yeah, makes it a little sticky.
I would just, I would like the reverse of that. Do it, get it, put it on like for January.
Yeah. Okay, I can go with that, too. Um, I'm good with that. Cause we've got some other things happening right now with the ad hoc committee for Arlac and.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Well, I'm just thinking that if volunteers. Park gives them some res- might give them some resolution.
I can't hear you.
Uh, he's concerned that volunteers working on the trails, it'll give them some sort of a. A resolution if we could move it quicker.
I think this is a much more complicated issue that um I think it can just kind of wait for a little bit. Um, it it would be prudent to have the city attorney work on the rules for a little bit. And maybe develop a little bit more detailed map. Once we know a little bit more about what's going on with this, then have the work session. I think we need some administrative help with this so that we're not just spinning our wheels. And um getting into discussions on this that we can't really resolve without solid information. Or without um reworking the rules a bit to make it a little bit more concise and a little bit more understandable for the users.
Yeah, cause I look at that GIS map and it makes no sense to me. I just see a bunch of trails, but it doesn't really mean anything, so I would agree with Vicki.
And I also think.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that I think we may also be looking at some ordinance changes. Since we accidentally dropped it and so I think that, you know, I think that has to be in place. Before we can do the lower level activities. And then again, too, we should have uh the park ordinance reworked so that if we have the biking um established and we have rules. That we have an ordinance that has some teeth to it so that it can be enforced. So I think there's a lot of work to be done before it ever even gets to a work session.
Yeah. Some of the things.
And I would.
Go ahead.
Trying to resolve the two maps. Uh, that Pat Cicerole gave us with uh the GPS map.
Okay. Well, I will work with uh Steve and Dan and the other folks to see what we can get uh going on this. And then my recommendation would be also January sometime to start putting something together.
I have no abduction to setting a date.
No, we don't need to, yeah. I don't think we need to set a date yet, let's just see how much information we can get. Cause right now, it really is, it's just, there's, there's bits and pieces and. I don't think we understand half of what's going on with it.
Um, I think perhaps we should say something to the public about uh the open council seat?
Uh, we will. Um, I think today is really the last day. And then we're able to start working on the process after today.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right, that's fine, thanks. Will we bring that up at the next council meeting?
Yes, that's the plan.
Yeah.
Then that's.
It's the, the ordinance reads that it's the first meeting after the resignation. And since Mr. Fields is is still on the council tonight, I didn't think it was appropriate to have that discussion. It is planned to have um both the process and then basically start the time limits for an appointment into that position in the next council meeting.
Okay. I, the reason I bring it up is because when I moved, oh, wait, okay, maybe I, I maybe I'm missing a date. Do we have a date that's the end of that term?
Well.
Mr. Fields' term?
Yes, no.
Um, he.
Okay, let me back up so that you understand where I'm coming. When the same thing happened to me back in the eighties. I, I was. Um, basically, the day that I moved from this, my previous house to this house was the last day of my term. And I found out about it the day before. So what I am trying to say is I assume the same is true now that.
Mr. Fields provided notice that established tonight as the last meeting that he was going to be eligible to um be on the council. That's the date we're running from.
Okay.
He provided notice, he provided a letter of resignation.
Right, and that's why I brought it up because I think we need to let the public know that there's an opening coming. Not that, you know, because yeah, the timeline is really close between filling out that part. And filing papers for next April.
Indeed, it is.
Okay, that's all, okay, that's all I need to say, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else. Then we stand adjourned.